Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our business meeting. Today's date is October 21, 2025. The time is 2:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Everline Duncan and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we will begin with a moment of silence. Okay, and next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. JP, could you start us off, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to pull item 16. It's a duplicate.
Okay. Any other changes?
No.
All right. Public comment. Would anyone like to speak? Hearing nothing. I will take a motion on the meeting minutes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes, items 1 through 4.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Consent calendar.
I move that we were missing one item, so if you're okay, I'll...
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we approve the consent calendar items 5 through 15, and 17 and 18.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. And payables?
I move that we approve the payables for October 13 through 17, 2025, in the amount of $2,777,734.41.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Okay, on to our first business item, number 20. Bid award, bid number 24 WSFM-01-08, CDA Equipment. It's 39.7 acres for the Northern Timber Fire Smart Grant. This is with our Office of Emergency Management. And Ms. Andrea Littlefield, are you on the telephone?
Yes, this is Andrea Littlefield for the record. Cootney County Office of Emergency Management is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve the bid award for the Northern Timber Fire Smart Grant for 39.7 acres of hazardous fuel treatment. We had six responsive qualified bidders respond to our notice inviting bids, with a CDA Equipment Company garnering the lowest bid.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for a bid award. Bid 24 WSFM-018, CDA Equipment, 39.7, 39.7870 acres, Northern Timber Fire Smart Grant, Office of Emergency Management.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 21. This is a financial budget item. It's a purchase approval for a knuckle boom crane repair. This was Solid Waste and Director John Phillips.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Phillips for the record. Knuckle boom crane located at the Ramsey Transfer Station is a critical piece of equipment that we use daily to top load trailers. The grapple is a necessary part of this piece of equipment and is in badly in need of repair. Our mechanic has worked on and repaired that grapple numerous times, but in the end, we just need to replace it and stop spending money on repairs. Total price of the replacement grapple, including estimated freight, was quoted at $32,595.60. But because that shipping is listed as subject to change and the grapple's very heavy, we're request the Solid Waste Department is requesting approval to spend up to $34,000 for the replacement grapple and the freight charges. The department did budget for this repair this fiscal year.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the purchase and repair of the knuckle boom crane up to $34,000.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, JP. Next up, item 22. It's a TASER purchase agreement with Axon Enterprises with our Adult Misdemeanor Probation Department, and we have our Director, Will Hunter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Will Hunter for the record.
You push your button for the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Will Hunter for the record. I'm before you today to get approval for a TASER purchase agreement with Axon Enterprises. It's a five-year agreement, and it was budgeted for, also requesting with that would be the start of our first payment of $13,518.96. And this has been reviewed, the agreement has been reviewed by legal and approved by them.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
Motion. I'll make a make a motion, TASER purchase agreement, Axon Enterprises, Adult Misdemeanor Probation.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 23. Board approval request. This is for the Hagadon Marine Morage with our Sheriff's Office and Sergeant Ryan Miller. Are you on the telephone?
Yes, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Sergeant Ryan Miller. For the record, this is our annual renewal for lease agreement with the Blackwell Island Sheriff's Office Boathouse in the amount of $8,670. It has been budgeted for, and it's coming out of the vessel account.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Hagadon Marine Morage Agreement for the Blackwell Island Morage.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Sergeant Miller.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Next up, item 24. This is a board approval request. Vogel appraisal quote, East Hayden Lake Road Community Development, and Director David Callahan.
Thank you. David Callahan, Community Development Director. This seeks your approval for an appraisal of property. You may recall, we have discussed its property on the north side of Hayden Lake that we've run the traps on throughout the county. No county department finds it useful. So we thought we would get an appraisal for you so that we could make an open market purchase, and you would know what the minimum bid should be for that property. Mr. Kerry Vogel has some considerable experience at these things. Deputy Attorney, prosecuting attorney Pat Braden has reviewed the terms of this engagement and finds it acceptable with some changes that you may have noticed were highlighted in yellow on the electronic version, and Mr. Vogel agrees with that. So for $1,500, we can get an appraisal on this property, and I believe it's well worth the money.
And your budget can absorb it?
In our consulting budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for board approval, board approval request, Vogel appraisal quote, East Hayden Lake Road Community Development.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is item 25. It's a contract amendment, Boat Garage Engineering and Design, MC Squared, Inc., with our Parks and Waterways Department, and Director Nick Snyder.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Snyder for the record. Before you is a no-cost contract amendment with MC Squared, who's providing those engineering design services for our boat garage replacement project. That amendment merely changes the performance date for deliverables from October 31 of '25 to January 2 of 2026. That's a benefit to the county, and again, no cost.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the contract amendment for the Boat Garage Engineering and Design with MC Squared, Inc.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 26. This is a board approval request for invoice 8556, remove and replace stairs for an ADA ramp with CR concrete in our building and grounds, and our Director Jeff Olar.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Olar for the record. This is an invoice that just needs your approval to pay because it exceeds the $10,000 threshold. The work was pre-approved to enter into that contract, and we just need your approval to pay the invoice.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for a board approval request, invoice 856...
8556.
8556. Remove and replace stairs, ADA ramp, CR, concrete, building and grounds.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 27. This is a board approval request pursuant to Policy 930. It's an invoice payment in the amount of $10,488.09 with election coding, November 2025 Consolidated Election with our Election Systems and Software, LLC, and our Elections Department, Asa Gray.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Elections Director Asa Gray for the record. Before you today is just a request for approval to pay this invoice. This is a standard invoice we receive every election from ESNS for the programming and coding of our tabulation equipment, along with our results processing system. So if there are any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the invoice payment of $10,488.09 for election coding for the November 2025 Consolidated Election with ESNS.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 28. Polling place interim events license, November 4, 2025 Consolidated Election Polling Location. It's at the Fairgrounds, Cootney County, with our Elections Department and Asa Gray again.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Yes, before you today is the interim event license for us to utilize the Jaclyn Building at the Fairgrounds as a polling location for four precincts again for this November election. This is the same process we went through and the same type of agreement we brought before you for the May election. We found it very successful in the May election. We're doing a few additional measures at that location to help voters find the correct entrance. That was really one of our only main issues was just we needed additional signage, so we're going to be putting signage on the fence around the different sides of the fairgrounds to help direct people to the Kathleen Entrance. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
Make a motion for polling place interim events license, November 4, 2025 Consolidated Election Polling Location, the Fairgrounds, Cootney County Elections.
I second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Resolution 2025-82. Designate polling places pursuant to Idaho Code 34-302 and Idaho Code 50-612. Expected December 2, 2025 runoff election for the City of Spirit Lake with our Elections Department and again, Asa Gray.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. This resolution is before you in the event that we need this runoff election, which we of course will not know until we have election results on November 4. There is a four-way race, however, for the mayor of Spirit Lake, and it is in their city ordinance. They have adopted the runoff provisions of Idaho Code 50-612, where if no candidate receives a majority of the vote, so 50% plus one, that the top two candidates will go on to a runoff election. We've been in coordination with the city and with the Secretary of State's office because there are several other counties around the state that could potentially be facing a runoff as well, depending on their election results. And we've all coordinated to plan this for Tuesday, December 2. Statute requires us to hold any runoff within 30 days of the regular election, which the 30 days falls on a Thursday, and as our voters are not used to voting on Thursdays, we're trying to be consistent with the Tuesday date. So we're asking you to adopt this, one, because technically a provision of Idaho Code 34-302 says polling places are to be designated 30 days or by the fifth Friday prior to any election, but two, also even if that could be waived based on the specific runoff statutes, it saves us a lot of time in our short time window we have after the election trying to get all these things in place. So I'm asking you to adopt this in the hopes that we won't need it, but the expectation we will.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2025-80, B O C C appropriate...
82.
Pardon?
We're on number 29, 82.
Oh, sorry. Resolution 2025-82, designate polling places pursuant to Idaho Code 34-302 and Idaho Code 50-612. Expected December 2, 2025 runoff election for the City of Spirit Lake Elections.
Second that approval.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 30. This is Resolution 2025-80. It's the B O C C appropriation, finding of necessity and authorization, delegation to contract for outside attorney services for the assessor. And we have Assessor Kovacs here.
Commissioners, this might have changed a little bit from the meeting this morning. I know the Commissioners were working on revising or changing the resolution. I haven't seen it. But this is coming up because we're into a new budget year. We have seven pending lawsuits. These are assessment appeal lawsuits. These are lawsuits that are filed against the Commissioners as the Board of Equalization, as well as the assessor. They're a stage in the appeal process, and it's litigation that we have to respond to. And we do have a conflict of interest, which is why we have an outside attorney involved in some of these, or actually all of these. And we were processing invoices at the end of the fiscal year, and because I have zero budget in my adopted budget, I brought this matter before the Board because I believe we do need to have funds appropriated into the budget. At least that's what the county budget law says. And so I'm asking the Commissioners to appropriate funding as well as, and I believe that's the change part, you're going to address that next week, is what you said. But this is to have the Board declare a necessity and authorize the contracting for outside attorney services for these additional lawsuits. There are, there are two additional new lawsuits, and one that I don't know was on the record before, so I'm adding that. And then the Board directed me this morning to put all seven lawsuits on this resolution. So I believe that's the change that's in front of you.
So I went back and I found the resolution that had the other three, so we don't need to do that.
Okay.
We don't need to add those. There's just some other language that I'm sure will address, but...
Is there anything else you have for this?
That's it, other than, if you have questions, I'll answer your questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
No questions, just language.
Yeah, I have a few things. First of all, you know, it's, I think it's important for people to understand, because when I see this that was posted online, big business gets property tax breaks from county commissioners, but you don't. I feel that statements like that are a little bit disingenuous. This Board and the Boards I've been on have tried hard to do, always do the right thing. And when it comes to litigation, I have not seen county commissioners walk away from their duty and obligation to fund lawsuits, to address lawsuits. And, you know, this particular resolution included a memorandum in here dated today, but this same memorandum was forwarded to me on October 17 by somebody else outside of the Board. And it says, "To the Board of County Commissioners, Bruce Matari, Leslie Duncan, Mark Everline." It doesn't say "to" anyone else. So when you get these things, you just have to wonder what's going on. And I looked at this resolution that was here before us, and it had 40, what did it have? 43 pages of supporting documentation. Nowhere in these 43 pages, which included an appendix, thank you, Mr. Assessor, an appendix that talked about general ledger account definitions. I'm not sure whether that's in here for supporting documentation, but what was not included was an explanation of what the cases were that were in the resolution. And we were being asked to say yes to a resolution without even knowing what these cases were. And thankfully, an hour before this meeting, we got an email that listed the case numbers and then what they were for. So thank you. But the things that stand out in the resolution for me is, and I looked at two previous resolutions that the Boards have approved related to these cases in some direct or indirect way. Resolutions 2023-96 and 2024-78. And in both of those, they say, "The Cootney County Assessor is hereby authorized with spending authority, including attorney's fees, and all other costs of litigation of Y dollars for the defense of district court case numbers. In order to preserve litigation strategy, the actual dollar limits for each case will be communicated to Assessor Kovacs in a privileged memo through his assigned county legal counsel and are incorporated herein as actual spending limits." That's 2023-96, 2024-78. Says, "Cootney County Assessor is hereby authorized with spending authority, including attorney's fees and all other costs of litigation, in an additional amount to be communicated to Assessor Kovacs in a privileged memo through his assigned county legal counsel, which is incorporated herein as the actual spending limit with respect to the above referenced case." Now, in this particular resolution before us today, "The Cootney County Assessor is hereby appropriated and authorized with the necessary funding and spending authority, including all attorney's fees and all other related costs of litigation for the defense of district court case numbers." It does not say anything about an amount to be appropriated by the Board. So my question is, is this written in such a way that it provides an unlimited budget or an unlimited amount that we're authorizing the assessor to spend on these lawsuits? Is there any way you might be able to answer that, Mr. Braden?
Well, the appropriation of the amounts that are allowed is always up to the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah.
I don't think that language limits that or purports to limit that. It's always subject to the appropriation that the county Commissioners gives.
Okay. So, so if we say yes to this today, we're not agreeing to some unlimited dollar amount. In fact, there's no dollar amount that would be allocated to these cases. Is that correct?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Because the other ones were very explicit.
I understand.
This isn't. So that's why it kind of raises a little bit of concern that we're approving something without knowing exactly what we're...
If you prefer the other language, you can always move to approve it with that, you know, with the other language substituting for the language that's problematic, that you find to be problematic.
Yeah.
And we can always, you know, write a final resolution that then, that you then sign.
Yeah. And does the Board have any thoughts on this?
I like consistency, so if that's a better way to go, then I don't have a problem adopting the language that we've already adopted in the previous resolution.
Yeah, I know that we have a meeting next week where we're going to discuss, you know, what we're looking at, how much we might possibly be looking at spending, things like that. And it just doesn't mention that in here, and that's why I'm kind of just a little, you know, I want to make sure that's very clear. Mark, do you have any thoughts on this?
Let's make it so.
So we'll add that to the resolution and just put it back for next week? Or can we amend the language now?
You can amend the language now if you want.
Yeah. And then I would just ask the last, be it further resolved. I find that repetitive and unnecessary, so if you want to take that paragraph out.
The whole paragraph?
Yeah. Yeah. Because everything else is stated. And again, I echo Commissioner Matari's concerns because it says, "Is further authorized to do all things necessary to defend and or resolve the above referenced cases." And so that's kind of open-ended, and just a concern that it would be taken as a blank check because it also allows the assessor to sign the contract for the outside attorney.
I'm perfectly fine with the Commissioner signing the contract. I don't have to sign it. And I would like the opportunity to respond to a couple of the comments you made, Commissioner Matari.
Sure.
The memorandum that you're talking about, we have to submit agenda items a week in advance or the prior week in order to make this agenda. So the date that I submitted was the 17th of October. I dated the memorandum for the date of the meeting, and that's what I did. I just advanced dated it. So that's, that explains that. The memorandum does reference all the history. It actually, it's a document that I provided to the Board of County Commissioners. It provided all the hyperlinks to the various County Commissioner Board meetings. We did have eight meetings where we discussed this. And Commissioner Matari, a few moments ago, when you were speaking of the resolution, you mentioned that the resolution itself does not actually appropriate the money. And therein lies the problem. That's the very issue that, why I'm coming to the Board, is the county budget law is very specific in terms of how funds are appropriated, and, and the auditor checks to make sure that we do have budget funds in our budget. Some of the attached documents that were part of that memorandum is our copies of our adopted budgets for the last four years. So you can clearly see that there is no ledger account number for attorney services, and we are directed by the Idaho County Budget Law to make our expenditures to those specific ledger accounts that are determined by the Board of County Commissioners. So when the Board adopts a budget that has zero dollars, effectively, I have no authorization. And, and so that's the concern that I have is, is as I was... and so that's the concern that I have, is as I work with these attorneys and as we're creating obligations, financial obligations to pay, it's concerning to me that I don't have an adopted budget. I've got essentially zero dollars in my budget, and that's a problem.
Well, I think part of the issue, first of all, again, the memo was addressed to the Board of County Commissioners, not everyone else outside.
Public document.
Well, again, they're getting it before we even get it.
But the board posts it online on your website.
But I received it on the 17th of October, okay? So it was before it even got pushed up on Friday, I think.
No.
So, but the next step is the fact that just because money isn't in the budget doesn't mean that the board can't appropriate it for things, especially mid-year. I mean, you can't anticipate all the lawsuits that are going to occur in a fiscal year.
Well, we're for specific instructions from the board not to make mid-year appropriations, and that's why we put it in part of our budget.
Okay, you're under... If there was any instruction by the board, it was not to have mid-year staffing changes that, okay, not mid-year appropriations, okay? You're conflating the two. All right? The reality is that every board I've been on has been accommodating by providing funding for your lawsuits. No one has denied you funding for your lawsuits, okay? Now, whether it's in the budget or we appropriate it outside of the budget, you're still getting the funding, okay? So I just don't understand why you're claiming you're not getting the funding when, in fact, I have a memo from last year where we gave you additional funding that you reminded us of.
Yeah, the memo is different than the actual appropriation. My understanding is you have to make the appropriation to have it in the budget.
You are authorized to spend this money. The board has given you authority to spend this money. We have.
But it wasn't put in my budget.
We still have said, we've agreed.
Okay, that's fine. We have clarity now, that's fine.
I mean, one of the issues too with money being in the budget is sometimes it gets spent inappropriately, and so, you know, that's part of the reason that we set money aside for very specific cases, not for lawsuits, but for a certain amount of money for this lawsuit and a certain amount of money for that lawsuit, okay? If we just put it in one big bucket, you know, then we're going to have to contend with, well, what happens if you decide to spend that money all on one lawsuit? All right? Because it's still within the dollar amount that's been appropriated, but the board is saying X dollars for this lawsuit, X dollars for that lawsuit, X dollars for a different lawsuit. That's all, but you're getting the money.
So the last point that I'd like to address is the big business comment, and the issue is these lawsuits, this one lawsuit in particular has been going on since 2019, one lawsuit per each year, and as far as I know, as far as I've been here, we've never really defended against that lawsuit. And these are assessed values that this Board of County Commissioners has supported when they were appealed to the Board of Equalization. So you wouldn't have upheld it had the appellant been able to prove the values wrong, and they weren't able to do that, so you supported it. It then goes to lawsuit, and what happens is the court orders mediation, and as a result of that, when I'm not, when the board does not want to fight the lawsuits, but I want to fight the lawsuits as the assessor, we have a conflict of interest. And essentially, the board is in control of the funds and essentially dictating to me that it needs to be settled, and so that's the conflict. It results in a settlement, and I added up the dollar values, and over the course of the ones that have been settled, comparing what they want the value to be versus what we want, the total tax dollars amounts to about $263,000. And that's what I'm referring to. That's essentially a shift, and it's not uniform.
Well, if I could, first of all, if it's the one entity in question, we, last year, we gave you additional money to fight that lawsuit, the lawsuits associated. If it's that one entity that I think it is, first of all. Second, you know, the board is tasked with ensuring that taxpayer money is spent appropriately. That's our job, okay? So, you know, when we look at a lawsuit, there's a cost-benefit component to it. If the lawsuit amount we're squabbling over is $20,000, are we going to spend $100,000 or $200,000 to fight that? And so we have to look at it as far as what's appropriate to spend taxpayer money to fight these things now.
And the assessor does that as well, all elected officials.
Now, I'm still talking, I'm still talking here, okay? Now, you're looking at it from one perspective, okay? And we have to look at it from the county treasury, you know, taxpayer dollars, okay? You've gotten more money for these lawsuits that are from the same entity, okay? The board has not backed down from trying to address that. What I will say, and we just talked about it earlier today, is that we have never had a strategy session. We've never been told, "How much money is it going to take to accomplish goal A?" And if goal A is $200,000 for a $20,000 difference, maybe we should be talking about a goal B, and how much is it going to cost to accomplish goal B? But I think until that conversation is had, I don't understand why we're having these conversations that you're not getting funding, because it's just not true. The board is doing that, but what we're not doing is getting the feedback necessary to make better decisions.
Well, I invite the board to have any strategy conversations that we can have.
We've been trying.
We've been trying.
Okay, we just got a bill the other day that crosses a couple of fiscal years. It would be nice if we actually got these things more frequent, which we agree that we will, so that we can start talking about progress and strategy more frequently.
So the board has not submitted to me any strategy, as far as I know.
It's not our strategy.
Other than to settle.
It's the attorney to tell us how much money they're going to need to accomplish goal A, and if goal A is too much money that they're going to need, then how much will goal B cost? But we all have to agree on that, okay? It's not an unlimited amount of money. We're not giving anyone a credit card with no... Well, you may not be asking for it, but you're characterizing it as if we're not giving you money.
A litigation estimate. We've never received a litigation estimate, and so the board, based on limited knowledge, has said, "Okay, we gave you this much, now we're giving you this much," and it's never been followed up by any strategy session, any litigation, you know, what did I just say, the estimate. So we're up here, and you're attacking us, saying that we're not funding this, but yet we're doing the best we can with the limited knowledge we have, and I think this morning we made great strides, and I'm looking forward to next Tuesday's meeting.
I mean, last year, we gave six times more amount of money, six times more amount of money to fight the additional lawsuit or lawsuits that came in after the original amount of money was given because a compelling enough case was given to, you know, for us to give more money. But again, like to Commissioner Duncan's point...
The case that I made to the board.
Yes, but we've never had a strategy session. We've never had a strategy session to say, "How much is it really going to cost to litigate this the way these properties have been valued so that we could see, you know, the outcome, a favorable outcome for the county?" Okay? And that discussion has not happened, and so, you know, we have given you money, we've given you multiples of more money over previous cases, and we're still willing to give you money as long as we can have good information to make a good decision.
I don't believe the board would have authorized that memo that you're talking about had I not made a good case.
Nobody's saying that, Bela. The problem is, we don't have a litigation estimate. So we gave you that much.
We talked about that this morning, and we're going to get that.
I mean, the amount that we gave you, albeit is a pretty large chunk of money, it could get burned up fast, you know, depending on how many different expert witnesses you want to get. Do we pay for travel and lodging, which I presume we do? You know, how many other attorneys might have to be called in on the case? You know, does the attorney of record have the bandwidth to manage? You know, because the other side can start throwing a lot of stuff at us, and then we have to hire another firm to manage the amount of workload that's coming in. There's a lot of different things that can happen. We've never had that discussion on strategy, but we've given you more money. So I'm okay with this resolution with these amendments to it that talk about a specific dollar amount to be provided through council like the previous resolutions so that we have a very clear budget, and then, and hopefully that dollar amount will be reflective of a strategy session next week so we can all be on the same page, and then you can go do what you need to do, and we know where we're all supposed to be going.
And I'd like to say, two of the seven lawsuits that we're talking about are very close to settlement, and that's a lawsuit that the board was willing to spend the money to litigate, and we...
Well, that's because the difference between the disputed amount was significantly more, significantly more.
Yeah.
So that's why.
Okay.
Again, going back to cost-benefit, how much are we willing to spend versus how much is in dispute?
I understand the cost-benefit, and I'm not saying we're going to spend endless sums of money. That's never been my objective.
But we've never, we've never heard what your objective is and how much your objective would possibly cost through your attorney. We've never heard that. Thank you. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Eberlein?
No.
All right, so...
Are you, are either or both of you okay with the last, "Let it be it further resolved" being taken out?
I'm fine with that.
I see it.
So I'll just ask by it.
The further be it?
Hmm?
The further be it?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's basically redundant.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And if you like, I will take attempt at this motion, Pat, so help me out if I get stuck. So I move that we approve resolution 2025-80 with substitute language regarding the amount to be provided in a separate memo and the deletion of the "be it further resolved" paragraph, which is for the finding of necessity and authorization, delegation to contract for outside attorney services for the assessor.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, public comment. Would anyone like to speak?
Commissioner Matarri, Brandy Falcon for the record, I'd just like to make a clarification. So as a result of that resolution, we are not going to do a budget adjustment, and we do have a line item in our accounting system, 8103 for legal services, so that will be where the expenses come out. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Public comment? Anybody on the telephone? No? 238, meaning adjourned. Thank you.